Let's call this meeting to order. George, could you take role? Colonel Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright. So, welcome everybody. It's great to see a lot of people here tonight. I just ask everyone that they stay for the whole meeting. It's gonna be interesting. So, in this...oh, excellent. So, with this part of the meeting, we always talk about the district goals, right? So, we have three goals. The first one is student achievement, and with that, we try to maximize the education for every student, right? So, we're trying to get every student, whether it's, you know, the whole student, you know, whether it's academics, arts, athletics, we're driving that goal. We've got a 2020 plan. Cameron's got, and his team have, an incredibly detailed plan, and they're working that plan every day. And every decision we make here supports that plan. The second goal is financial prudence. And financial prudence is probably why a lot of people are here tonight, because at times, we have to, we've gotta maximize every dollar that comes out of that, from the taxpayers and from the state, and we have to take those dollars, and we have to maximize them. And so, that times, because there's limited resources, at times, we have to make decisions on how best to use those dollars, how to best allocate those across the board for all the students, right? And we wanna make sure that we do that in a fair and in the best, where we get the most bang for our buck, and we look at that hard every day, and, you know, we have one of the best treasurers in the state, if not the best, who goes over those numbers in incredible detail, and he, you know, we're getting award after award from the state for the work that he does, and the detail level in which he analyzes every decision that we make, and the support that we get when we have what ifs, or we talk about things. So, we've got an incredible treasurer, we've got an incredible superintendent and administration team, we've got incredible teachers and aides, all working hard together to make this thing. And then, that brings us to our third goal, which is community engagement. We try to maximize the community engagement. So, at times, we can't do everything with the dollars that we have, so we count on the public to help us out. And we do that through, we've got, you know, we have people show up at the policy meetings, we have a finance committee, we have a facilities committee, we have a business group that comes in and helps us, and then, then you take in with that, and you put in all the PTAs and the Education Foundation, and all the other people who go through these groups and help us in so many different ways. So, that's what we do, and we go through, and it's kind of a balancing act, right? So, you'd like to do everything, right? We'd like to provide every opportunity, every program, everything to every student, but we only have limited tax dollars. So, we have to take those tax dollars, allocate them out the best way, and do the best we can. So, those are our goals, and that's kinda how we approach these meetings, and that's kinda how we approach everything. So, with that, that brings us to public comment. I have three public comments here, requests for public comments. We'll call all three of these up. Actually, I have two. Two. I thought I had three. I thought I have two. I ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes. Go update your name, your address, your phone number. Try not to use any names. You know, it's not a, I'll also say that it's not an open discussion. You're making a public comment to the board. We will always make sure that someone from the board or administration gets back to you if you have questions, but we're not necessarily gonna go back and forth in a conversation at this point. So, we'll take those, and someone will get back to you. Generally, someone from Cameron's team will, or one of those board members will give you a call, and we'll talk it through when we have more time for that. So, the first one is Andy Hartman, right?
Yes.
Okay. And yours, your comments on the phase outs?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And you were here last week.
I was.
Alright. And you're getting great.
Oh, thank you. My name is Andy Hartman. My address is 12300 Cooper's Run. Not only am I a parent of two students at the high school, but I'm also the president of the Strongsville Instrumental Music Boosters, and our mission is to support the band and orchestra programs throughout the district. As I look at the people that are here, wow, stunned. Thank you guys for coming. I'm concerned about some of the things that I'm hearing about the Phase One cuts, so I'm eager to hear what those are and how they're particularly going to impact the band and orchestra programs. I'm also here to ask that we make the Phase Two and Phase Three proposed cuts public immediately. The community, the parents deserve to understand what they're looking at, and they deserve to understand what kind of school the board is proposing we support. It's up to the community to ultimately decide what kind of school system we wanna be. We don't get to pick what goes and what stays, so I'm asking the board, as soon as possible, tonight even, please, share with us not only the Phase One cuts, but also the proposed Phase Two and Phase Three cuts, because like I said, I'm very interested to understand how it's going to impact our band and orchestra programs in Strongsville. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can tell you that tonight, we're gonna go through the Phase One cuts. These are the ones that are gonna happen regardless of whether the levy passed, 'cause remember, we reduced the levy from 7.9, didn't pass. You know, we're gonna vote tonight on a lower millage amount, but that means we have to make some cuts. So, we're gonna go through those cuts that are gonna be made regardless of the passage of the levy. We're gonna talk about those tonight. And then, at our next board meeting, I believe, we're gonna go through the Phase Two cuts. So, we are gonna make those within the next two weeks. We're still working on, George and Cameron are still putting a pencil to that, he's still gotta share it with us, and we're gonna go through that. But they will be made available in the next couple of weeks. We'll see, we'll lay those all to bear, so that everybody has a good look at those. So, we appreciate you being here. With that, we have another, first Danielle Stevenson would like to speak, and she was Phase One cuts and the impact to the music department.
My name is Danielle Stevenson. My address is 16871 Woodleaf Road. My phone number is 920-327-3139. I'm also concerned about the music program, as I have two students, only one is in the program. And I wanna start also by thanking you, 'cause I know this is not a fun job. I would not wanna be in your position, and I know that every cut you make is nothing you wanna cut. But, kinda piggybacking off of what Andy just said, I think it is important to let the community know exactly what happens when they vote no on these levies. That it has to be very clear what will happen and how much it will affect your students, even your property value, whether you have a child in this district or not. The other thing that I would ask is, you know, when you guys do make the decision on cutting the music program, to please bring in the people that run this music program, so they can tell you, you know, if you take away a band teacher in sixth grade, you have students that might've started band in fifth grade, but there are other students that begin band in sixth grade. And it's like trying to teach a foreign language class. You've got ten kids learning Spanish, ten learning French, and ten learning German, all in the same class. And I think it will hurt, because we have an amazing music program, and it is known throughout Strongsville, and it's known throughout Cleveland. My child is a member of the Contemporary Youth Orchestra of Cleveland, which is made up of six, kids from sixty different schools. Twelve kids from Strongsville are in there. My daughter's one of two eighth graders in that program. And if it wasn't for the program that you offer, she would not be where she is today. And it has helped her through some very dark times. Music is her passion, and I think we all know how important it is to keep a music program. But I think, most importantly, I think you have to have these music teachers at least give their input when you make these decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One, I really, I really respect the passion of the music program. We love these programs. Our own children are in these programs, our friends are in these programs, we go to the concerts, we get it. Know that, know that the music program isn't being singled out, it's not being, it, these proposed cuts are across the board, and they're very serious. I mean, I know they're, you know, they've been described as, you know, not as, they're certainly not as drastic as the next step, but these are impacting 550 kids, you know, 5,500 kids, right? They're impacting the lives of, you know, eight to ten people dramatically. I mean, and we don't take that lightly. So, we're doing every, that's why I supported the 7.9, quite frankly, 'cause I didn't wanna be in this position, alright? The community spoke, they said, nope. Okay, we get it. So, now, we have to go to a lower number and figure out how to, like, again, when I talked about the goals between student achievement and financial prudence, now, we're trying to balance, right? We're doing a balancing act. And we are doing everything we can to stretch every dollar. We're still looking for savings that don't impact people. And every one of these cuts impact people, and they impact staff that we, you know, that we know and love, quite frankly. So, we're working through this, and impacting all the kids, and we don't want that to happen. So, we're doing everything we can to minimize the impact. What we need is the passion from this group, and I've seen the boost, I've seen the music boosters in action, I've seen what they can do. What we need is what if, today, and I'd like you all to stay for the vote, please, 'cause we're gonna vote on the levy at, you know, coming up shortly here. I would like everyone to know that we need your help to get the word out. You guys have an incredible group of people who respond, right? And they, and they show up. Look, we haven't had this many people here in four or five years, I'm telling you, there hasn't been. So, you know, the word gets out, you guys show up, that's exactly what we need when we start working the levy in another week. So, actually, it's gonna start immediately, right? Depending on what happens. But we're gonna need all your help. I've seen how organized you are, I've seen how committed you are, that's what we need. This room, plus a hundred more people, you know, knocking on doors and getting things done. So, I appreciate you all being here, we hear you, we're working to do our best, and we're gonna do everything we can, but we're gonna need all you guys to help. I'll stop talking.
If I could make a comment, I think you absolutely hit the nail on the top of the head. Obviously, everybody in this room knows that I have a son who is in seventh grade and plays in orchestra, and he absolutely loves it, he adores it. Mr. Hyer, you're one of the people that leads that entire group. But the one thing that you said, that I don't think people in this community understand, it's about your property values. People come to Strongsville. They buy homes. They rebuild those homes. They paint those homes. They fix those homes, because they wanna put their children in the best community school district in Cogga County. And that's what Strongsville is. Strongsville is a place where you have a myriad of opportunities for your children. Orchestra, band, choir, athletics. I mean, you can honestly be a senior in high school and go into college and be a sophomore, because you've accumulated those credit hours in your junior and senior year. It breaks my heart that we have to even have this conversation. It breaks my heart to have to pull things away from children, that those programs should be there for those kids. But it's gonna take the work of all of us up here and you out there to go door to door to let people understand property values are based on people wanting to come into our community and fixing homes and helping those homes. And that's what Strongsville has done for the past ten years. So, thank you for your time.
Alright. And with that, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. The first item for your consideration is the resolution for an additional 5.9 mil five-year tax levy for the purpose of current expenses. A resolution determining to proceed to submit to the electors of Strongsville City School District the question of an additional 5.9 mil five-year tax levy for the purpose of current expenses pursuant to Section 5705.21 of the Revised Code, and it can be found in Exhibit A.
Can I have a motion?
So, moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any discussion? Alright. Take role. Colonel Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent. So, the levy begins now. Don't anybody leave this room without giving us your phone number, email address.
Address the whole thing.
Just leave your driver's license up on the table, and we'll just, we'll just collect those, we'll get right back to you. Or a credit card would help as well. No, thank you. We don't take it, I'm joking, but we don't take it lightly. We are, we're gonna start this right now. We're gonna explain why we need this money, we're gonna show what it's gonna get. Last time, we kinda focused on what we lost, and this time, we're gonna focus on what we get. So, you know, we're gonna talk about what you get from a Strongsville education, and I think if you see that, whether you're a homeowner, or whether you're, you know, especially if you're a student, or, you know, a staff member, or whatever, what is, it's what we're gonna, what we deliver. And, you know, we saw the graduation last year, we saw all our kids going, you know, MIT and Ohio State and Kent State, which is the Harvard of the Midwest, but...
Mr. Neso? We do, and anybody that's interested in here, of course, Cameron, if they contact you, or just get your email, send an email to Cameron if you're interested in helping. There is a levy committee, because all of the stuff, none of it's supported by school money. We can't spend any taxpayer dollars on our levy campaign. So, as per last time, we had to go out to the businesses in Strongsville and to individuals and ask for assistance, because signs cost money, advertisements in the post cost money, all the activities, getting a consultant in to make sure we run the campaign correctly, that all costs money. And so, it helps to get, and our businesses in Strongsville have been wonderful, by the way, providing funds last time. But I invite all of you to sign up and help to participate, and get your neighbors to sign up, 'cause this time around, we really need to get the citizens out to help. And it's not just for the kids that are going to Harvard or MIT, it's for all the kids, all the kids that come back into technical fields. Lord knows, we need more welders and more plumbers and everybody else out there, and our programs at the schools are very, very, very good for that as well. So, we'd appreciate all of you being here tonight, as has been said, and we'd appreciate your help. Keep in mind that this levy will only get us back to what we had in 2007 in terms of funding, so we still have to make some cuts, but they're gonna be very carefully considered. And certainly, I agree with the comments made about the music programs here, they're excellent. So, we appreciate that, all of the, Mr. King, Mr. Hyer, that I hear all the music teachers that are in attendance, and appreciate that. But we will, we need your help, as I said last meeting. Thank you.
Alright. If there's no further comments, then we will move on to the Phase One reductions. Now, these reductions we made, these are, this is the compromise, right? So, with 7.9 didn't pass, we get it, we heard it, we had focus groups, we listened, you know, we shortened, this is a limited term levy, it's not continuous, we lowered the millage. So, these, this is the compromise part of that, and that we now have to make cuts to kinda balance that thing out. And we're gonna look at these, and we'll go through them, and look at the recommendation of them, and see what goes, go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. And before I begin, I just wanna share that, you know, as superintendent for the last four years, I've been in central office for seven years, you know, the staff and the district, we've created a vision for what we want our school district to be, for our kids, for our parents, for our community, and, you know, this is, this is a challenging time for us, because what we've started to build and where we're going and the momentum we have, this is the first step of starting to chip that away. And as I look at the faces in the audience tonight of the impact my decisions will have on the people, I see the faces that my decisions impact. I know some people don't see that, and it's just dollar figures that we have to reduce, but there's a story behind every decision I have to make, and I understand that we're in a situation where we have to reduce costs, and that's my job to recommend those reductions. And as you said, these are reductions that we have to make no matter what. As we talked about last board meeting, whether my computer went off, or here we go. See, the internet went out, that's a sign. Well, we'll put it here until we can reconnect here, but as we saw last time when I was here, or last board meeting, we have a deficit that we need to address. We've got deficit funding, as you could see in the forecast, in that middle line, where we're going to be deficit spending by 3.4 million dollars. Now, with the board approving a May 2019 levy, we need to understand that even if that levy passes in May, we don't see additional tax revenue till fiscal year 2020. So, that's, that's something that we've gotta take a look at and proactively reduce our expenses. If you can just give me a second to pause to try and get this, 'cause it's gonna be, it's still not showing up. I'm gonna try and reload it here.
You're hooked up, aren't you?
Yeah. I'm trying to turn it off right now.
I'm gonna go to the other computer, and I can talk from there.
Okay.
It's a warning.
Camera, I think I might've reconnected.
It's just trying to connect up top.
There it is, it's fine.
It's good, Cameron.
Jenny put the touch on it. Fix it.
Okay. So, as I was saying, is that, you know, we've gotta take a look at that deficit spending and reduce our costs, and even though I know this is a little difficult to see, and we just kept it the same as last time, but as we could see here, even with the 5.9 mil levy passed in May, we still are in the pattern of deficit spending in almost all but one year. So, we need to take a look at how we can proactively reduce costs, and we set a target of reducing costs by 1 million dollars a year moving forward, and we were able to reduce costs by a little over 1.1 million dollars. So, what I wanna do is, up here on the board, is a summary of the Phase One reductions. I'll talk a little bit about specifics, and as you can see, we went through a variety of departments across the district to take a look at where we could save additional funds and implement them regardless of the school levy. So, the first reduction that will be implemented starting next school year is in the athletic department, and that's a reduction of three eighth-grade sports teams. We currently have two eighth-grade teams for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and volleyball. We are going to go down to one team. So, that's going to save on the contracts that go with those coaching contracts, it's gonna save 16,500 dollars. And so, as it stands right now with this phase, there'll still be two teams at the seventh-grade level, but eighth-grade level will be reducing those three sports for our eighth graders. And board members, I'm gonna go on. If there's any questions or any feedback, your further discussion, please jump in at any time. The next, we took a look at curriculum department. When Aaron, our director of curriculum, and I started together six, seven years ago, we had books from the 1990s, and we had, you know, history textbooks that were way out of date, and over the last five or so years, we've been able to get all of our materials up to date for our students, so our teachers and our students have the best resources that they possibly can. However, that's a large expense. So, we did have a textbook adoption scheduled to be implemented for the school year. That will be indefinitely delayed, and that will save the district a little over 311,000 dollars. And that's something that, yes, this is a figure for one year, but this is something that textbook adoptions, we have different, we have a rotation, a schedule that we're on to keep our textbooks up to date, so we don't recreate the problems we've had in the past of textbooks being 20 years outdated, and we have, every year, we're updating a small percentage, so we keep up with it. I guess if you look at, if there's any positive to this, you save a large sum of money. The negative of this is that sooner or later, you're going to have to update textbooks, and you get away from a little bit every year to large amounts to update the resources that our students and our teachers need to get the education they deserve. The next one, in terms of the district, we did look at the district. We looked at a reduction of budgets. So, all of our buildings have budgets that are providing the resources that our students and staff need. We've made a 10% reduction in all the budgets across the entire district, as well as some other policy and procedural changes that'll save on costs for the district. All that will equal 55,000 dollars in savings. Moving on to staffing at the district level, or decisions at the district level, the decisions that we've made to reduce staffing there is gonna save the district almost 252,000 dollars a year. These reductions are basically looking at reducing the number of days various employees or employee groups work. So, what this means is, starting this summer, all of our elementary buildings and middle schools will be closed for the end of June and month of July, and will not reopen until August. All of our support staff will no longer be working during the summer months, except for custodial staff to help reduce costs in that area. We will eliminate a department that we currently have to support our district and outsource that work. For other support that we give to our new teachers will be reduced, as well as we have a variety of staff that work extra days to prepare for the school year to do necessary work, and we're asking them to do that in less days to save additional funds. So, those changes there will save, like I said, 251,796 dollars. As we take a look at the buildings and move to the high school, the high school reductions, and this, these savings will be a reduction of certified and support staff and supplemental contracts. So, what this means is, unfortunately, people will no longer be employed with the district moving forward, or have supplemental contracts available, and that will save 168,475 dollars. So, what this equates to is the reduction of two certificated staffing positions and two support staff positions. Now, since we have a lot of music folks here, I wanna specifically address music. And for the community member that shared that we should talk to the people that are in the know first, I wanna assure you that I did speak with the people that were in the know. And obviously, none of us like to make these reductions, but one of the things that we talked about was preserving the core aspect of our music program, our performance-based courses, our, you know, vocal music, our orchestral program, our band program, and we've done everything we've can to preserve that. The music reductions that are a part of this are that we currently have, at the middle school, and I'll talk, or at the high school, we have music classes that are co-taught, meaning some of our larger ensembles have two teachers in the classroom at the same time. That's ideal. That's what we would like to provide the support for our students in those programs, to be able to work with different sections at a time and have that extra set of hands and expertise to do that, but we can no longer have that luxury or that benefit to our students because of the cost reductions that we need to make. So, at the high school, those courses that had two, music performance courses that had two teachers in them, next year, we'll only have one teacher in them. And so, that's our efforts to protect, that we're not looking in Phase One to reduce, you know, the symphony orchestra, or the symphonic band, or the marching band, or, you know, fifth-grade music, or the similar courses at the middle school. But there will be some staffing reductions, and once I get through the middle school, I'll talk about a little bit about how that all works. At the middle school, again, it's personnel. We will reduce one and a half certified positions- We will reduce one and a half certified positions at the middle school. We will reduce two support staff positions at the middle school. And again, talking specifically about the music courses, we will not only be eliminating two people in the classroom, but we will be eliminating non-performance-based courses. So, we do have different courses at the middle school. One of them is called Strum. It's where kids are taught ukulele. That will no longer be offered. Again, so we can preserve the orchestra, the choir, and the band program. I do wanna talk a little bit, and I know it's getting into the specifics. But when we talk about music staffing, the challenge that we have to look at as a district is when we make reductions, we reduce based on seniority and licensure. Now, the challenge with music teachers is they all have the same license. So, I'll pick on two people that I'm looking at now. Andy Hayer, who's the head of our orchestra department, has the same teaching license as Brian King, who's the head of the instrument, oversees the instrumental music department, has the same license as our five elementary music teachers, has the same license as Vicki Iker and our choral directors. So, as we take a look at the rules we have to follow, and I understand that rumors are out there about which staff may have been communicated with about reductions, we don't have the luxury to look at and say, "Well, we're reducing this vocal music course," which we're not. "So, we need to reduce a vocal music teacher." We have to look at what is the least senior teacher with that licensure? And if we have to reduce teaching jobs in the music area, we have to reduce that. So, it could mean that we have to reduce an orchestra-based teacher, but an orchestra-based courses are still there. And then, that has to be filled by somebody that may or may not be skilled in orchestra. As a former musician and have a degree in music, I understand that I grew up as a trumpet player. And when they taught me to play the violin and viola, I decided I didn't wanna be a music teacher anymore. And so, I understand the difficulties that this causes. And we have a vested interest, not only because of my background, but because of what we feel is in the best interest of our students, to make it work as best as we possibly can. And I understand, I know we have teachers, one of them specifically is here tonight that may not be, have an orchestra background, but has done a phenomenal job of doing everything possible to have a successful orchestra program. So, those are the details that we have to work through as we look at these reductions. When we take a look at next with student services, as it says there, it's a reduction of funding for educational supports in our students. This is a budget reduction. There were funds that were used in our student service as a district budget that we were able to provide to the building levels or to the staff or to the district that will no longer be there. Student services budget will be cut by $140,000 through $2,000. Technology, a similar, similar reduction. We did have money set aside for additional STEM and tech programming for our students that cannot longer go forward. And that'll save the district $26,800. And then, finally, transportation. We are going to reduce selected, actually, two routes in this Phase One reduction. We will reduce a Strongsville City Schools route. We feel that we can still meet the same guidelines we have with transportation, with one less route for our district, as well as one less route for the parochial schools that were by law required to transport a large portion of them that are in the area. So, by reducing those two bus driver positions, that saves the district $62,000. I'm all told, if you add that all up, that's a savings of $1,148,798. So, Mr. Neso, that's the totality of the Phase One reductions. As you said, at the next board meeting on the 21st, we'll go through in similar detail the Phase Two reductions, which would occur if the May levy did not pass. And so, I open it up to the board for feedback, discussion, for the questions you may have.
The only thing I'll add is that the charge that we gave Cameron for the reductions was that the reductions had to be across the board. We didn't want one group, one, one set of students, one set of, you know, we wanted it across the board so that it was as evenly shared as possible by all the students. We, you know, if you break the students down into different groups, we wanted to make sure that all of that, that the impact was, and that way, it minimizes it to everybody. But at the same time, it spreads the pain, I guess, if there's any other way to put it. But, so, you did an excellent job in doing that. We thank you. I know it's not easy. I know it's not easy. So, we thank you for that effort. And with that, anybody else saying? Jane, Richard, George, Duke, if you have any comments or questions you wanna?
I would just say that these are bad. We, none of us wanted to see any of this. We wanted to keep our schools the way they were because we were doing great. And we just didn't get the support from the voters. I'll tell you from the preliminary Phase Two results, those are horrible. And Phase Three, if we get to that, it's draconian. So, like I said, and I'll reiterate, it sounds like a broken record, but if we don't get the help from all the parents and all the citizens in the city to get the word out and get this levy passed, we have no choice. The state says you cannot operate in a deficit. So, it's black and white. We gotta get the levy passed.
And we're gonna do a better job of getting the message out. Clearly, in the last attempt, the message wasn't as clear and concise. There was a lot of other noise. There was a lot of other things out there that were distracting from what we're trying to do. We're gonna do a better job of getting that message out. And that's on us to do that as well. It's, you know, people support what they understand and makes sense to them. We gotta make sure they understand it and it makes sense, and then we'll get the support. I mean, we always do in the past. We always, and I know we will once we lay it out and they see it and we get the message across. But it takes, it takes the whole, you know, the whole village here. It takes everybody who's in this town when you're in the grocery store and someone says, you know, "I'm voting against that levies." Like, one, tell them it ain't cool to vote against levies. I don't know when it became cool to say, "I'm against everything." But I don't know how that started, but it ain't cool. And we need to let them know that ain't cool and here's why you should vote for it 'cause here's the benefit for everybody. So, we gotta start working through that. And, you know, Richard talks about it a lot when we talk about these things. We have to convince people that we're, it's better served to give us their money than to keep it. And it's, you know, we just have to figure out how to get that message out there. But we're gonna do it and we're gonna do it the best we can. And, you know, we just hope we can get this done in May. The danger, here's another danger, right, that we don't talk about too much, is that, okay, so it doesn't, if we don't get it in May, and we're going to get it in May, this levy's gonna pass. We're gonna get it done. If we don't, the next one's in November. The next chance we get is November. That's already halfway into the next school year. So, we have to make cuts before that school year begins. So, that's why May is so critical. We have to get this done.
Just to reiterate what Colonel said, nobody wants this. Phase One was across the board. Phase One hurts. If you're here at the next school board meeting and you hear Phase Two and you hear Phase Three, it's downright painful. The amount of opportunities that our children are going to lose is going to be painful. So, please, come to the next school board meeting, listen,